Good morning, everyone. This is Knox County Commissioners, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. My first item on our agenda is to have Jeff update us on the Knox County water and wastewater. So I turn it over to you. And you turn to Wallace first.
Right, and you didn't get it either?
Did you send this something?
You didn't get that. Never mind. All right, we're gonna have to do something with them.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, I sent, I sent it like eight o'clock this morning, but it was only three. Kyle, can you play the video?
Yeah.
And we'll go down through. There's a couple little short videos that uh, these were from the camera we bought them back, you know, a couple of years ago with the ARPA money. And you know, we've had some issues at the Harborview area in the back of the lake with INI inflow and infiltration. So we've got a couple really quick. They're gonna be quick and short because it doesn't play real well on the computer, but it's better than.
Now, is this where we've had a couple homes that had.
Correct. Yes, exactly, exactly. So. So we have that all camera. So the whole collection system. So we've identified and I think we ended up with uh, seven or eight laterals that were leaking pretty bad. He's gonna show you a couple really quickly here. Uh, and.
And you have a fix?
Yeah, see water coming in and um. Okay, like I say, they're really quick. They're, they're, they're better on the TV. They.
That person is with people at home too.
Yeah.
Okay, so these are, these are leaking laterals. So it's where the, the homeowner's line is coming and tying into our main sewer, okay? So if it was all back up in the lateral, then it would ultimately be the homeowner's responsibility to, to fix. But we've identified seven or eight places where these were tied in back in, you know, the eighties and either they didn't do them correctly, or they deteriorated over time or whatever. So I think it was only just those couple Kyle. Uh, most of it is um, clay tile.
And how close, how close do you think the leak is? To the main line?
It's right there. So, so.
Right where you're tying it in.
Correct, right where we're tied it in at. So what we've done is, is our camera is capable of, they, they, they bring these uh, bands in and we actually pull them down through there with the camera. And then there's a toll to inflate them out. And so they go up around that lateral and most of these laterals don't have houses on them. Okay, so the ones, I think we found one that has a house that we're gonna actually have to dig up and fix. Uh, because what we call the live lateral. The rest of them are, are not in service. They were laterals that were put in, you know, while they were building the subdivisions out and, and putting the, the infrastructure in. So we just capped them off. So we got notes on that. So if a house ever goes in there, then we'll have to make a new tap into the sewer. But there's no sense in having that line sitting there. You can see how much water and you know that we've had, you know, numerous problems back there. So we're trying to.
Back by the marina again?
Yes, back by the marina. Yep. So uh, that pump station is right there by the marina and that's the one we've, we've had issue with. We understand. So they did get uh, I think they have uh, three or four of them that they got done a couple of weeks ago. And um, there's a couple, our company came in and actually did us a favor and those protrude out through the sewer line a little bit. So you can't put the thing on. They bring a piece of equipment in and actually cut those off flush on their force for free. A piece of equipment was three hundred and fifty some thousand dollars. Yeah, we don't be buying one anytime soon. So. So anyway, they did that for free as a demo and to do some training for, with my guys with the camera operation and the, and the band repair. So we've, we've eliminated some of it. We haven't eliminated it at all. Uh, they are done cammering with all of that. So that whole collection system has been cammered and we've identified the the areas that we need to address. So that's one of the things on my, it's a paper that you guys didn't end up getting, but I'll forward it. So you guys all get a copy and you can kind of sift through it then a little bit. So.
So they demoed. So the next time we need them, they tell them per hour?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a per hour. So and, and that's what I was asking my, my employees was that is there someone there that we can still do, but all of them are protruding out and we're not sure that we'll get a really good seal if we don't go in and cut those smooth against that pipe. So but you know, they're eight to ten feet deep. You start talking about some safety issues and getting in digging that deep. It's wet back there. Um, so even though this is expensive, this is probably the better and more, more safer way of doing it. And um, so you know, there's means and methods. Sometimes, sometimes it's better just to dig it up, but back in those areas, probably gonna be better for us to just spend the money and but uh, we're gonna concentrate on that harbor view and try to get that tightened up the best we can. Uh, we'll probably go back in later on in the fall and camera it again, just to make sure that what we've done fixed everything and there isn't something else that we kind of missed in there. Cause you can only camera when the ground's really wet. That's only time the water's gonna come in. So obviously, so you know, when it's dry, our flows are down at the plant right now going out in Cameron's not gonna do us much, much good because we're not gonna see much. So. Um, some of these still may be salt pumps and stuff that are illegally tied in. Some pumps are not supposed to be in there. So that's as I was telling the guys that they go up through and camera, they need to take their time because some pumps are intermittent going through. So uh, it may take four or five minutes to see a salt pump cycling on and off and you'll see it. Big blast of fresh water coming into there and that creates that many more problems for us.
Uh, so talk to me about wired. So in Apple Valley, some pumps are illegal to have?
Some pumps are illegal in any place. Clean water sources, uh, Ohio EPA requires all entities to pass a resolution ordinance or whatever for no clean water connections. Downspouts, some pumps.
Are illegal.
Are illegal. Yes. They, the EPA does not want that clean water in there. Why, why would you treat clean water? Yes, yes. Yes, it needs to go to storm water, go to the lake, you know, go to the surface, go to the ditch or wherever. Yes, but not in our sewer. And the, and then the problem that you run into is you start looking at places back there. We may pump that same gallon of water four or five times. So think all the power that we're wasting, that you dumped your salt pump or your, 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 your downspouts in our sewer. And now we're pumping all that water four or five times to the treatment plant and then having to treat it. So that's the other problem and that's, you know, that's one reason why the EPA doesn't want it in there. Plus it over, overwhelms the systems. Obviously it overwhelms that pump station as we well know. And it overwhelms our plant. So we're not alone. So.
So do we ever in Apple Valley bills tell them that you're still legal that for them to have a.
Probably should, we should probably should send it back out again just to make sure everybody understands. I mean, it's in our rules and regulations and people hop on the website.
I'm sure people read this.
But they don't read that. They don't read their bills either. So um, the unfortunate part, but yes.
Right, heavy fine for it?
Uh, no, there's no heavy fine, but they, i- if we do find it, you, you will be responsible for taking it out and removing it. Just not any different than if we have problems with ours, we're going to have to take it out.
How do they tap in? How do they run into the?
Normally just cutting, oh, the salt pumps are usually tied in in their basement and a lot of times tied into their, their sewer lines just in the basement.
Put it right in their sewer line.
Yeah, cause you know, a lot of times the, the salt pumps on the inside, you know, catching all of the foundation drains coming around. A lot of them come in. You get a bee dryer, somebody that comes in and, and is drying up your basement. That's what they do. They, they, they cut those troughs in, salt pump in and have to watch where they're pumping it out at. It's an easy connection right there.
Yeah.
Very easy. Cause normally, you know, a lot of times your washing machines and stuff are down there. That's an easy tie in, you know? Four drains go out the, out the bottom and so it's easy, easy enough. And or just tying your foundation drains, you know, at some point in time, they just tied them in, into there also. So um, there's a lot of clean water connections out there that aren't ours, our responsibility, but they're hard to find. I mean, it's, it's one of them things that you almost have to go house to house to um, try to determine. Do you have a salt pump? Where's your pump going? It's pretty.
Well, it sounds like it would be a great job for the new intern at Knox Pages to do a story on this and go out to Apple Valley to ask the residents if they have a salt pump in their, in their basement and do the survey for us.
And everybody's gonna be honest, right?
Yes.
They're gonna tell us that they have a salt pump tied into our sewer.
Yeah, you're from wire, get off my porch.
So anyway, we're, we're working, we're working on that. Uh, that's the area that a- a- as we've talked for many months now, but that's the area we know. We have other places that, that have INI problems, but that was the most critical. That's the one that we know. We have some issues with some of our customers and everything. So we're, we're trying. It, it isn't an overnight, you know, uh, resolve, but we're getting there. With that being said, uh, we had a company come in and discuss uh, doing pigging on the line. I'm gonna explain what pigging is. So uh, pigging on the force main line coming from Harborview pump station. Um, lines will tend to get built up over a period of time. The pumps that were in there for years and years didn't pump very many gallons. So you have a tendency of solids laying out. That goes underneath the lake back there in the back by the marina. Okay, that line does. So we had them come in, they're experts. Um, they're a little bit squirmish about doing that and getting the pig. The rubber plug um, stuck in the line underneath the lake and then we may have a problem. They were also a little bit concerned about where uh, it's ductile underneath the lake, but where we tie in, are those connections good enough that we start increasing high pressure pushing these plugs through to clean this? So it's basically just a, a plug that just goes through and cleans, cleans the lines, breaks the lines all out, which then you don't have as much head, much pressure and it pumps, pump more gallons. So they're a little bit squeamish about that. So they give us an alternative and that we're, we're working on that right now of just using our pump that we have, our bypass backup pump that we bought three or four years ago. Using it and running high volumes of water through that line for a period of time and doing some testing before, doing some testing afterwards and trying to determine, did that make a difference? Did that help scour out some of that? So that's another thing we're trying to do at Harborview, that if the pumps will pump more gallons and get rid of it, it doesn't solve the problem, but it puts a Band-Aid on it and we get rid of the water out of the sewer and then we don't have problems with the backing up on people's houses. So we need to fix them and that.
How many feet actually are underneath the lake?
I can't remember.
Is it like? Wiles were?
No, 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 no. It's, it's, it's several hundred feet. But yeah, no, we're not. Cause that, 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 that line is only, uh, I think it's like fourteen hundred feet total from the pump station to where it discharges into man.
So the connections eventually with time and tenure, it sounds like they're gonna fail anyway.
Not necessarily, because you're not under high pressure. We were gonna be putting that under high pressure when you're trying to shove that through. Normal operation, yeah, you should be all white. They were just not knowing exactly how those were connected. They were a little bit afraid that, you know, we get a hundred and fifty PSI in there and trying to shove that. Yeah. And then we have a much bigger problem. So if we choose to go down that road, it will be later on in the fall, when the lake's down, we can get to it. There's not a bunch of people in the lake recreational wise. So if we have an issue, then so um, I don't know. I'm, I don't know if I'm willing to roll that dice yet. Uh, so we, we are gonna do some flushing on that and see if that helps. And it's kind of a flushing, just like what we do on water lines when we're flushing, flushing hydrants and cleaning water lines. You know, we're trying to scour that out. You, you pick up the velocity. So that's that's our game plan for Harborview. That's our main area that we're concentrating. There will be some other places that we start looking at with the camera and, and doing some, some remedial work on that and, and taking care of the INI too. So um. Let's hop down through here. So I did tell you Harborview is all done. We've got, we, all the collection lines are finished. Uh, we haven't got anything else started yet. Uh, they're still working on cleaning right aways, which we talked about early in the spring. We've had a bunch of new construction and a bunch of service lines we've had to put, you know, new water line services we've had to put in. So um, good for us. But it ties up a lot of our time. So uh, the little extra things that are nice to get done aren't getting done necessarily. So. We're gonna roll down through here and if you see my little color, I have a little red line up on here. We had talked about every year we clean a well. We have a well. Um, and we started on number two. Unfortunately, we had a major catastrophe on well number six, which is the biggest well we have. Um, the motor went out. We expedited it, got the new motor in, which was about fifteen thousand dollars and there's other issues. So they were down last Friday. They've pulled all the shafts. They believe the pump is bad too. Uh, so I mean, we're probably looking at thirty or forty thousand dollars that we weren't planning on spending uh, to work on well number six. The bad part is, is that that leaves us one good well running. And they say good, we have five wells down there just to re-educate you guys. Three are smaller wells, two are the main big wells that produce all the water. Okay? Uh, now we're down one well, so we end up with one good well, one big well. Um, we have a permit that we already got through Ohio EPA to drill another well and it may be something that we want to explore sooner than later. I mean, it's kind of been in the long range plans, but funding wise, trying to pay for it. Um, but if something happens to well three, I can tell you right now during the summertime, we'd be on a water restriction because we could not produce enough water.
Cost, I can't, it's gonna be the cost.
We're gonna be in like a hundred and seventy-five thousand was, was a ballpark throw out. I mean, you know, don't pull me.
I was gonna ask that, looking at the repair versus a new well.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we have to repair that well. That's, that is the main well. And that's the well that's over closest to the ball fields. Okay? That was the one that we were most concerned about over there because it does produce the majority of the, you know, the majority of our water from that well. Um, so I, I, I think that it would behoove us to start doing a little bit of legwork and, and trying to decipher what it's actually going to cost and if it's money out of reserve. I mean, that's why we put some money back every year was to, to deal with some of this stuff, but um, you're pretty, you're pretty vulnerable. Uh, I mean, something happens to well three, like I say, we're, we're gonna be on water restriction use uh, because we will not be able to freeze. That would give us three main wells. So then you're pretty much guaranteed that you're gonna have two wells, at least one good well, you know, at any one time. And, and we would alternate them just like we do the, all the other, the all five wells. So, so there's two main wells, six and three, and then um, two, five and, and one alternate with those. So they're kind of like backups. They, they produce a little bit, couple hundred gallons a minute. Uh, the other ones are producing four, five, six hundred gallons a minute. So.
And knowing my luck, it'll be peak season when the other one decides.
Wow. And that's, that's the unfortunate part. So we've, we, we, we paid a little bit of extra money to get the motor done because we thought that that was all that was wrong with it. I would have made another decision had I had another well. I would have saved, I would have saved several thousand dollars, but we tried to expedite it to get it done. And then when we hooked it back up, there was more problems and we believe that the motor created bearing shafts. Pump problems then on down because it just resonated down through. So.
Yeah, how, I can't remember. How long was it? If you green lighted that to get that well up and running, the, the new one, if you were gonna drill a new.
Well, you're gonna, obviously we have to put it out for bid. So we, we would have to put, so we could get the well drilled. Um, once we get that done and get the testing, then we have to do a PTI through Ohio EPA. It's kind of a backwards thing. Normally you get a PTI permit to install first and then do it. Well, it's backwards in this. So we would drill the well, have all the data, then submit. We'd have to hire a firm to help us submit that application. And then EPA would approve. Yes, you can bring that well online and then we'd probably do another, another bid to install the pump. The piping to tie over into the existing main and all that down there. So.
And with your two main ones, they're, you, you.
Yeah, they alternate, they alternate each, they alternate each cycle. No, they, they alternate each cycle. So, so like six and, six and two will run. And then when they shut off and it's demanded, we need water at the front tank because they pump to the front tank of Apple Valley. That's where the wells pumped to. Then they switch and they go from three to, to whatever, you know, five and, and then they'll switch back again. So there's three smaller ones and two bigger ones. So they alternate, these alternate every third time, the small ones, but the big ones are every other time. And they usually run at least twice a day that they cycle. So both pumps are running pretty close. That we, we're getting both big pumps are running every day. At least once.
You know, when was the last time we had that pump replaced, the one that's needing?
It's before, it's before me. So and I've been here eight and a half years. So it's, it's been in there. We have done some work to that. That, that well. So that's the one that kind of come back and bid us a couple of years ago too. So we had some issues with.
So, so the, you know, people who live in the country that have wells, they're used to, you know, casings like this.
Yeah. And we're talking ten inch casing. Yeah.
Okay. So is that the same thing or do you?
Yeah, it's a similar.
Monster.
Yeah, it's just a monster. Yeah. Our, our motor's on the top on this one. Our motor's on the top. It's not a submersible where you're thinking about us who live in the country have a, have a, normally it's a submersible pump. The motor is right on the pump and you pump up. Some people have a a jet pump where they actually have a motor and the pump is sitting in their basement and, and it draws it up. So.
And then would you have that with this? Would you?
Yes.
Taste it?
Yeah, yeah. Like we would build a building over it. Yeah. Whether, whether it was a brick building or not. I mean, you know, pole barn type of structure. Yes, having it up. Because that is a floodplain down there. So having it up high enough, um, so that we don't worry about it flooding. But uh, yes, also have it in a building because that creates a little bit of a problem down there with well number six, the one we're working on right now. Because of trying to keep that stuff freezing.
We've had discussions about this, you know, you and I and I think.
Yeah.
And the commission.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just.
I mean, we've, we've kicked it a little bit and that, uh, but I did go through last year and get the permit and, and I do have a permit from EPA to, to drill a well. It is now well number seven. It used to be now well number plus five.
So listen to some numbers being tossed around, a couple hundred thousand to do this well, yeah.
Oh, I would say you're probably looking at a quarter of a million again. Two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars probably by the time you're done. I mean, um. You know, and things only go up. So you know, two years from now it'll only be more than that.
So refresh my memory as to where this well will be related to the ball fields.
Okay, it will be back away from the ball fields. So it would be, it would be closer to the river. Okay? Um, if you, if you come in the gate, well, number six and the ball fields are over here, it will be right in here. So it's almost directly coming in from the gate. You come in the main gate and just basically driving straight, but it is back closer to the, to the river.
And that one, when we did a test, that was.
That was a really good one. Yes, yeah. Originally, you know, back in the day, somebody had done one and they had not drilled it down far enough and they, they scrapped the idea. So we went back and revisited with the contractor that had originally done it. And uh, yes, it appears to be a really good well. So.
So you want.
Till you, till you drill it and I mean, you know, and.
I'll, do they know how deep that one would have to go?
Yeah, we're, we're, no, we won't be much deeper than the rest of them. You know, that sixty, seventy feet. That's why it was critical to put the fence up around down there. Okay. Cause of that water table where it's at. So yeah, it's not gonna be a real, real deep well. So.
And you already have the go ahead then really to do it.
We already have the go ahead from the EPA. Yes, to do it. So we're already permitted for that well to drill it, not to bring it online. And I said, then we'll have to go back after we drill it, then we'll have to go through the, the PTI process with them, getting them to approve that. Yes, that's water quality is great, production's good. Yes, everything's good. Now you can bring it online.
So is this a year of production, basically? It would take a year to do that well and wait it?
I think so. I think six months you'd have it done. I mean, like I say, it, it kind of depends a little bit on w- once you get the well drilled, then the EPA, it's kind of falls into their hands of how quick do they get the PTI back to us? You know, for the approval for us, then put back out for bid again to install the pieces and parts and tie into the main, main water line. So um, as I said, we, we've done a little bit of the legwork on it, but um, now we're just at the point, hey, do we bite the bullet? Okay, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
A lot of money for that water budget. So a lot, a lot of money. Budget's only about a million dollars for the year. So that's quite a bit. Uh, let's look down through here, see anything else. I'll try to bury up and get them. So. We're, we're starting to work on the load banks for the generators again. It's rolling around about that time of year. We're getting quotes from three or four different companies to do it. Um, we just had them done later in the fall, but we're already in the middle of June. So we're working that uh, we will have their, make sure their quotes are good through September and probably be looking at September to start running uh, load banks again on all, almost all the generation. I think that we come up with fifteen this morning. I went through it. So fifteen generation. Probably looking at twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars to do that. It's just added expense every year that we have to do. So. Uh, we're working on, they, they've got the, they've got parts and stuff now for PVA. We found some areas out there, the collection lines, not, not part of the, the sewer plant, but the collection lines that need to be replaced, not repaired, but replaced. So we are, we, we, we bought the materials. We just need to get the time to get out there, but that's on our little master list for my managers to, to get done.
Does that require taking, yeah?
Yep. Unfortunately, there's a lot of roots uh, outside, outside our property as we go up on the west side. Uh, it looks like we're gonna be replacing quite a bit of sewer line up through there. Um, there's so many roots up through, but till we get into it, we couldn't get the camera through. So we can't tell. But I'm guessing, yeah, there's gonna be a few hundred feet in there that we're gonna have to replace. So um. Centerburg, we, I'll jump down real quick. Centerburg uh, generator is installed now and complete. That's all up. The telemetry's up and running over there. Uh, we, we know pump cycles and hours and we've calculated flows at the pump. So I kind of have rough ideas of how much flow is being pumped out of there each day. With that being said, uh, we've already purchased, it has not been delivered yet, a flow meter for that pump station and also a, a, a vault for it to go in. The vault is ready. The flow meter is not here yet. Uh, when it gets here, we will be installing that. And we will know exactly how much flow we're pumping out there twenty-four, seven, three hundred sixty-five days.
Which was one of the things when it was Terry, the village administrator I met, that was one of the things that we wanted to put in that contract. She wanted in there. So we're working that. That she has the draft that I went through with prosecutor, I went through with Jeff, we've submitted to them for comments, suggestions they have. We're getting close, I think. So, but that was gonna be one of the items that they wanted.
There'll be a few things that we'll address down the road. Once we have some hard fact numbers coming from that, that subdivision, then we can kind of negotiate, correct? We'll kind of negotiate then on, on some of that. So, because we just have some guess limits at this point in time. So I mean, so um.
Did, and we did um, allow the bus drivers that had down there.
Yeah, Todd, we're. Todd, Todd and I went over, yeah. We went over and I gave them, we had that other piece of property on the other side of the creek and that I don't do anything with, which was where the treatment plant was at, at one point in time. So yeah, I think that all.
Section of gravel, the school, the, their bus superintendent went out like the location, the superintendent. But thank you guys for taking care of that. So I think we're good to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so people who may not know what we're even talking about, Sandberg Schools has a bus that goes down in this area. It was having difficulty turning around and making that turn. So.
Yeah, this will make it much better for everybody with that there because there was some, there was some, it was pretty tight. Them hitting our pump station. We have a generator sitting there now for, for backup power and all that. So it was making it pretty tight for them to get turned around and it's quite a ways to back a bus all the way back up down through there. So yeah. A couple little maintenance things. We need to do some repairs on our main building out there. So we've got a quote and they're getting ready to do that. We've got some. It's that rolled roof and it's coming up in several places before we end up with a water leak. So uh, we had somebody inspect it for us for free and so we're doing that. And we're also getting some quotes on our uh, main garage. Uh, to put a new roof on that, that building's almost forty years old. We've had a couple leaks and before we end up with trust issues and you know, that's over equipment. We got hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment sitting in there. So to keep that building up. That's, so we've, we've, we've got one. We're waiting on two more quotes to get done on that. And then the only other thing is uh, we, we did some quotes on chipping ceiling, our area inside the fence. And um, we've already awarded that to, to a company. So as they work, we're gonna get that chicken sealed to try to save that blacktop for asphalt as long as we possibly can. Cause that was a pretty cost, costly little effort, but that was all part of the plant upgrades. So you know, that all absorbed into there. So trying to do that uh, now would use all my maintenance budget for the whole year. So anyway, I think that's it.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Appreciate it.
How fast to be?
All right.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you'd like to film. Yeah, I can't climb down there, Kyle. I want to, I have, I don't have good knees.
You got two of those. How are you there?
New knees, they just aren't good. Yeah, that kills me. You can't.
She's a guardian ad litem.
Get down on your knees, guys.
Guardian ad litem for children.
Thank you, Jeff.
JFS care. We have.
Do you have anybody with you today, Scotty?
Well, today they're all tired of me.
So now we have Scott Boone from the Job and Family Services uh, to share with us. Have your A and E report even about a coffee, please, Eric.
Dead.
Yeah. So thank you, Scott, for, for being here.
Thank you. Um, eh, at any point, obviously, if you have any particular questions, um, please let me know. I, I won't insult your intelligence by reading this to you, but I did wanna um, hit on a couple of highlights. Uh, beginning with the director's message, it's always important to me um, to recognize our partnerships in the community. Uh, it's difficult to give a elevator speech to anybody that's not entirely familiar with our work about what we do and all the programs that we have. I always like to talk about our relationship with your office, how much we depend on all of you for your support. How much I depend on Jason to get supportive mechanisms so that we can do our jobs to the best of our abilities on a daily basis. And beyond that, um, the relationships that we have with Ford law enforcement, uh, mental health professionals, so on and so forth. Those are, are, are key relationships that, that we continue to foster and appreciate. And uh, in my uh, little diatribe at, at the beginning, I want to make sure that I recognize at least generally um, how important um, many people that are in this community that make us go and, and again, especially the board of county commissioners. So that's. Uh, sort of the reminder behind that, our, our mission statement, obviously, the synopsis of that is to make the lives of Knox County families better. That's something that we all uh, talk about. And, and the expectations that we have related to our work on a daily basis, and we want to make sure that we remind staff of. Um, why we're here and this is what we're supposed to do. Beyond that, uh, moving forward with the public assistance, you can see. Uh, an outline of uh, sort of the traffic that we get, what it looks like in the volume, we get a lot of. Visitors to the office, we get a lot of people at the, at the drop box, they're using a, utilizing that. Um.
To drop box, they had to go upstairs or?
It's, it's behind the building. I think they've moved it now with the uh, construction, but yeah, it should be over by the, the US Post footbox. Uh, and we have those for child support and, and workforce and children's services as well.
Those faxes, so. Well, we have an issue of faxes out at uh, sheriff's office, so don't have that issue here with them or. Even know anything about their faxes.
No, I don't know anything about their fax system. We, we get a lot, yeah, it's working. Um, I, I'm not sure why we, we still get that mode of communication from people, but. You know, it's, I think it's more of a comfort level than anything else, but, um.
So are, are you then on spectrum as well? There's a whole building on spectrum?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, for internet, um, I don't know what they have for their faxes for. Um, if they go over old phone lines or if they're converted, cause I think they're with. CVTS and sent bell telephone or whatever, um, so it might be like a digital analog. Conversion system they have, uh, which would go around some of that.
Okay. So, so you send faxes out, I assume, as well as receive?
We, we receive more than we send.
Yeah.
Um, we typically like to respond to communication and the method that it's delivered in, in kind. Um, but if we can do electronically, that would be our preference, but we understand. You know, the, the needs of the variety of, of the families and consumers and, and how they prefer, you know, some people. Um, wanna do a face-to-face visit, some people would rather do it over the phone, some people would wanna do it on. The computer, so those methods and varieties are available to everybody and wanna cater to the way that makes it most comfortable for those people that are applying and. And receiving the benefits. Um, so then you see uh, the caseload by assistance group SNAP is uh, supplemental nutrition assistance program. Which is uh, food cards. And then TNF is temporary assistance for needy families, that's the, our cash assistance. And you can see those uh, are relatively even for month to month. Um, our TNFs are, are considerably lower. Um, especially compared to what they were five, ten years ago, which um, again is, is, we see that as progress and. More and more people now integrated into the working community versus receiving benefits. And then.
On the SNAP, we had a hiccup last, uh, uh, what, August? When benefits were being taken, is, is that a non-issue now?
It's, it's an issue with the application progress, process that we've adjusted to, it, it's added some steps for our staff. But we've adapted to that and we're still delivering timely responses and, and application timing as it, by all that.
Yep, so what about when they, maybe I'm getting my, uh, minds messed up, but. I go get groceries, using that card, and then those things were being skimmed and going.
Yeah, uh, skimming still continues, um. We haven't had as many reports as we did back in late summer, early fall of twenty-four. And I think that's what you were, I apologize for misunderstanding that. Um, but I haven't heard anything from um, the sheriff, back when uh, shape was. Uh, the sheriff, we got some reports from him about, you know, some higher level. Uh, things that were happening in bakers and some of the other stores in the community. We haven't heard anything more about that, the states. Made some adjustments in terms of access and, and they're talking about maybe converting over to. A different card and some things like that, but we're waiting to see the next. Uh, and then calls by uh, queue, that's related to our collaborate, um. Uh, cooperation with uh, the other, I, I think we're up to nine or ten counties. Um, where the call center, we field the different calls, see both from Knox and for other counties, and we process those applications. Um, I think I've sent um, some regular statistics that Jason has probably passed along to you in terms of our timeline as we usually top three. And timeliness of applications and moving people off the phones in a, in a timely manner, and so we're. I'm very proud of Carla and her staff for being able to, to generate that so efficiently, despite the fact that it. It seems like she's uh, she's off and down positions and staffing levels, it's, it's. It takes a good year or two to learn how to do that job. And um, when we do, um, you know, if we've, if we keep people around two or three years, we consider that fortunate. It's just a, a high turnover, we've got a lot of young people that come in and. They wanna move on and to do bigger and better things with their lives, which is, you know, we support all that. Um, but it, it makes things a little bit um, inconsistent in terms of staffing levels, so. Carla is, is mastered her ability to, to manage those vacancies as they've heard and. And to generate uh, consistent customer service, um, despite all that. Um, and then uh, a little more about application timeliness, you see ninety-nine point one two, um. In the uh, alert timeliness, income eligibility verification system, which has. Relates to federal tax information and those, and then at the bottom. Um, just some general expenditures by program um, within Knox County during twenty twenty-four related to SNAP Medicaid and. T them, so.
So can I, what, what do you mean by application timeliness? Let's try to figure it for that.
So, um, I think. Generally speaking, when um, when in, in individual applies for benefits, we have a, a certain amount of time. I think it's two to three days to, to process that. Carlos team generally does it same day or within twenty-four hours, so that's where we, um. You know, we, we, we take people at their word and we treat people like adults and we believe in their honesty and integrity. And for the most part, that works out in terms of the information that they deliver to us. Meshes with their income eligibility requirements and so on and so forth, and so we, uh, we. Are inclined more to prove folks in the beginning, uh, versus making them wait and go through. On shoots, by the time they get to us, they can pass around. And, you know, uh, place to place in terms of how do I get help with this, how do I get help with that? We wanna make sure that we can deliver on their expectations to, to get assistance. Um, and then moving on to child support, um, again, a breakdown of cases, visits, and just activities. Um, we're still very proud of our partnership with the Knox County Sheriff's Office and the Seek Work Program. And you could see some general um, numbers related to that in terms of uh, warrants served and. And um, collections and then some total collections at the bottom. I think I've talked about before, years ago, and the child support mentality was to. Take away driver's licenses and incarcerate non-paying parents. Um, and that would be the motivating factor to, to get them to, to come around and provide support for their children. When in fact, taking away their freedom and their ability to get back and forth to work. Uh, didn't seem like such a good idea, and so we're, we're fortunate that even though this is a law enforcement presence and relationship. Um, the feedback that we get from the deputies is that um, that the parents are, are very receptive to. Um, not only engaging beyond that, oh gosh, you know, what, you know, what do I need to do now? But beyond that, um, the, the sheriffs are very good at navigating them. Um, with through the Seek Work Program to employment opportunities and types of things, so we. We enjoy that relationship very much.
Um, what would be the difference as to the issued and asserted warrants?
Uh, the issued uh, served is uh, where they actually were able to. Establish contact with the person that was on the other end of warrant.
So twenty-seven, they couldn't find.
They, their MIA or. Weren't able to, to complete process. And then workforce development, my plan is to uh, bring Brandy in next month and um. She's been here before, obviously, but just to give maybe a, a bigger and better breakdown of um. Uh, workforce activities. Her programs, as you know, are very complex and very fast spreading. And what we would also like to do is, you know, offer you the opportunity to come out and visit the building, we're still. Um, thanks to you all, um, doing the flooring, I think the painting is finishing up relatively soon. Um, there've been some hiccups in just in terms of supplies and things like that, but I think we're on our way and hopefully we'll be ready by. July or August to, to show off all the polish and, and furniture and, and things like this. Thank you again. Very much for that, um, we get a lot of traffic out there too.
Will the roof be done, I think?
I, I don't think so.
I don't think so. The A-track's all done. I think the painting is just about done. I think you got four in and broke.
Yeah, I go, yeah, I haven't heard anything about the roof, um. Uh, I just know the flooring was, is, is, they were either beginning installation or preparing to do that.
Penny was out there yesterday for, for Bama Way stuff, and a lot of the floors down there looks.
Is it, they started Saturday, they got the front foyer and the main hallway back to the back door.
Great.
And they were putting like the molding in those areas.
Great, yeah, we, we appreciate their ability to come out on the weekends because we've got, you know, all of the rooms are, are typically full of. People coming in there and, and experiencing whatever level of programming, whether it's the virtual reality goggles or. You just to um, credit recovery or those different types of things, so they. Brandy gets a little nervous when we can't have full access to all of the rooms, but. Um, she, she timed it so, and, and we worked it out to where we, we got the summer youth program done. A week or two ago, um, and so that, that we got all that out of the way and then the flooring started and so now it's. Um. Makes her a little let it, less anxious in terms of our ability to um, give people the attention that they need. Um. And, and as I may have talked about, Brandy's done a wonderful job developing new relationships with businesses in the community that we didn't have. In the past with the Gozing and Ariel and, and some of those different places, and so we're. I'm very proud of her work for, for what she's able to do with that. And then uh, the following page is summer youth employment, that covers kids ages fourteen to seventeen, um. Talking about the high means job readiness, graduation enrollments, we had. Last year we had twenty-four participants, this year I think we had twenty-five, maybe, our cap is twenty-five. I think we enrolled twenty-five last year, but we had a, a youth dropout for, for some reason. Um, and then the, the dream program below that, um, were, you know. Young adult readiness and, and education, um, some numbers related to that, we're always very proud of, uh, when we're able to connect. Kids and young adults to their GEDs and, and those different types of things, so we, we had six of those last year. Um, and then uh, the following page of just some general uh, numbers about. Uh, caseload sizes and, and how they relate to um. Snap programming, education and training and so on and so forth. Um, you, you have the color, so I, I, mine's in black and white, so you, you probably makes more sense.
I have a nutrow with color black and white, which just blew me away, I think color blind, so.
But again, you know, it's something, I, I just delivered this to Jason yesterday and, and you might not have had to, to read it in, in its entirety, isn't. Perhaps you prefer bringing Brandy back and, and.
So what's the SAP, uh, supplemental nutrition assistance program education and training?
Well, that's where we uh, we connect uh, people to work activities, it's time limited program. Where they get benefits for a limited amount of time, while they perform work activities and, and gain skills and. Sometimes educational training, vocational training, to be a viable, employable person in the community.
So if I'm in SNAP, that, that's a.
If you qualify.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Um, and then just some, we've talked, I've been here before, where we and Brandy, who's been with me, and we've talked about our, our relationship with. Uh, with that, um, and Knox Public Transit and how um, we've been working. Out a good relationship there with getting uh, people connected to uh, an ability to get back and forth to their educational programming. Or their job readiness and so on and so forth. And there was.
So for that figure on, on the net, the cat trips, cause before I think that was only like fifty thousand.
But the.
This was for, this is for all twenty-four.
Yeah, I know, but I was thinking even before, like in twenty-three, it wasn't very much.
Well, we, we've done a lot to try to expand access, um. In, uh, I think we can, there's still maybe some room to do that, but we've just, uh, with Jason's help, we've taken a different look at it to work with Bethany. Maybe offer up some more opportunities to people that maybe they weren't aware of or.
This is a good, good number.
Yes. Uh, and then our.
I'm sorry, are you seeing the gas slip drop since you're doing more with cat, because I know you get gas slips out too, right?
I haven't seen that, um, if it is, if it has dropped, it probably hasn't been significant, because there's, there's people that. Um, have transportation prefer, you have to continue to access it that way, and I, I get it too. If you have a car, I wanna use my car.
Cause the ga- gas vouchers for twenty-four was forty-nine thousand and the uh, Knox County Transit uh, trips were two hundred thirty-seven. That's really good.
I think so too.
Yeah, it was a good job.
And then our recycling, you know, our, um, we've sort of put the, the shredders to bed because they, they just weren't. Terribly functional, um, but, but we did manage to um, do some good recycling and, and waste removal. Uh, we do the electronics recycling with lithium batteries and those different types of devices twice a month. Um, and we get good foot traffic on that typically. Um, and then the, the uh, the dumpsters out, the recycling dumpsters out there, there's. Every time I go out there to drop off some cargo, they're, they're healthy. So, and I know they took away some dumpsters, I think in, in Centerburg.
Yeah.
And um, and this left some people scrambling around for some other opportunities.
Just past Miller Township.
Yeah. Um, but, but, you know, we, we were, um, we were happy to accommodate that when, you know, they came from Memorial Park and, and. Jason proposed to me the idea, well, maybe we can put them out your way. They're getting good uses, is my best update to add to that.
Could you talk a little bit, cause they have shredded steel generated?
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
That's uh, so when we get uh, the metal recycling, um. We put that through a, a machine to um, to compact it down.
Yeah, what, what would people break to you guys that would qualify?
Uh, fence posts.
Okay.
Um.
Metal, metal fence posts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the freon removal, so if they have air conditioner, you know, window air conditioners.
Exactly.
Bring those to you guys and you, does there charge for that, do you know?
Uh, we, we would accept a, a donation at your comfort level, but there's not a charge. Um, we, we have to have a certain certification for that, so I think our lead. Uh, worker and, and maybe one of the other uh, guys at the shop has, have those credentials, so.
Scott, this is a revenue generator, right? So when they do these things, it's helping. Job Family Services, where it's helping people to work.
It's both.
Oh.
Brandon, yeah, I mean, the, the, the revenue generated isn't uh, terribly high. Um, but, but it helped, any little bit helps with, with our budget and um, programming, they get part of the reason that we. Had to cut back on the shredding was, you know, we were develop, we were devoting um, work time and, and energy. Um to that, which is, we were we're happy to do, but it was sort of beyond the scope of what. What normally they should be paying attention to and was taking away from some of their other programming, especially in the summer when lawn mowing is such a big. You know, all the all the acres that we cover for that. Um and when it's raining as much as it has and you only have so many opportunities to get out when the decks. Um we need everybody out.
Kind of agreement we've had, we provide the mower, but Scott's crews both everything out there, all the jail property. And I know to enough, I mean, there's a lot of acres and ground to mow out there. They've kind of graciously taking care of all that for us.
Yeah.
And we update the mower as needed and then they see the work.
We're happy to do that. And and last more that you purchased for us, uh it it works great. Before that, we were just piecing and parceling. Things together on ten year old mowers, so we're doing any fight over who did cleaning more and all that stuff. And that's 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 great. I would do that. I would do that, too, but. Um and then children's services um. Uh so in investigations and intake, the number of calls to the hot hotline in twenty four, number of after hours calls. Number of reports and it's broken down by category. Um you see our primary is is neglect. Um physical abuse uh closely behind that. Um there are many allegations that we get that include more than one uh type of alleged abuse. Uh so keep that in mind as well. And then the findings were substantiated. There's a preponderance of evidence that. The allegation was purported to us. There's evidence to support that that happened, indicated that it's it's likely that there. Was an abusive or an emotional uh or a neglect of uh type of event. Um but we can't say with a hundred percent certainly. And then unsubstantiated, there was a lack of evidence to support the report. Um so just to give you sort of uh some loose definitions of of those categories, when when we. Perform an investigation and we talk to all the family members and and relative stakeholders. Uh we we do send a letter to the family, including the alleged perpetrator, as well as the caregiver of the children. Letting them know the outcome of the investigation and um what the next steps would be in terms of either closing the case or passing it on to our ongoing team. For additional services to hopefully preserve uh the children in their home of origin or if unfortunately children need to be removed. Those are the reasons there's dangers to their safety. Um we would be offering services to reunify with. The home of origin or some of the family member or in a last case scenario, a permanency outcome of adoption or long term foster care. And and so then in the next page related to ongoing, it it summarizes our activities related to that by. By uh age and um frequency and and so on and so forth that um. That we we keep track of. We have a. A database that helps us generate reports to sort of see how we're doing with investigation timeliness and home visit compliance and. Um how we, what we're really looking at in terms of the the types of challenges that our families are experiencing, so on and so forth. And then on the final page uh with uh some foster care and adoption. Uh statistics uh for last year. And of course, we're always uh proud of our work with uh area agency on aging. That was here last time and um the population that we serve that's sixteen older. There's just some some general numbers.
So if we want more details about the adult protective services, I know that we get uh reports every now and then.
You do. I so I asked Rick to send me numbers every month and and depending on what's going on, I mean, sometimes I get them every month. And sometimes it it's a little more difficult and uh but he'll always go back and send me the months that maybe got missed. And then I'll pass this along to Jason and share those with you as as they come in. Matter of fact, I don't know if I got. Ladies number, so anyway, um where they're they're extremely helpful and and get caught up in. You know, their own, their own things, just like we all do, so always willing to help and always willing to share information. And be transparent. And if and if you, when you take a deeper look at this, if you have questions about, you know, a particular number. Or category or whatever it is, um we can provide you with more information that. Help clarify that or add some more context.
Well, we're doing a a a review of the senior levy. We're funding to go and having that uh deeper report. On the adult services would would help us.
Okay, I get it.
To see what areas they're seeing as.
Yeah. I'll uh I'll reach out to Rick as soon as I'm done here and see what he's got.
Appreciate that.
Very welcome. Um other than that, all as well.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Jason, I'm assuming that we can get this report on our website so that people will be able to, if they want to look at.
That'd be great.
Is this on your website?
It will be. I wanted to share with the commissioners before we.
Thank you. Yes, we could probably do a link then. And with, and is Kay out there in the hall?
Does anybody come up with Kay?
Lisa Lloyd.
So she might be waiting for Lisa. Do you want to do our couple items here? So we have a memorandum of understanding, the three Knox County Department of Job and Family Services and Marshals Department store. This is just their typical back to school uh voucher program that they receive funding for. This is state agreement. There's not a dollar amount. It's just the process of what's how they'll process those vouchers.
Do you need a motion?
Yes. Second.
Those favors say hi.
Uh requires all three commissioner's signatures. And then uh we do have a couple items we've added. One. And you received a type one expedited petition for annexation, Wayne Township, and this is for eighty nine point four one acres. To the village of Fredericktown. And we have just, this is just to enter into the record, you don't have to approve anything, but you can see some. Annotate that that we did.
Does it say with that eighty nine point four acres is that? Uh it's on the, it's on the edge of Fredericktown. It's been a. Piece of property that the village has looked at for several years and had thought to um the owner. About having it annexed in so that they can.
All right, so that is more to come, but not just now. Let's Penny start the process and she'll bring that back to you um at a later time.
Terry Days.
Yeah, I remember now. She'll have that, yeah. And then the other item commissioners is, I did receive late yesterday. Maybe documentation for for you to sign the act over and application for that EMS, Frederick County EMS. Um this is really, there's, again, you had asked me to deal with funding and all that. That's really predicated on whether this grant comes through. So this is just allows them to submit the application. So just you approve this. There's several areas that uh restaurant first will need to sign.
But it's actually alone, right? Not a grant?
Well, it's a grant. Yeah, it's a grant to um. It's a grant to the co-op.
Right, okay. Yeah, utility or electric.
Then they do the one out.
Okay. Yeah, so motion for that?
I'm motioning.
A second?
Those favors say hi.
I don't can't get down, barely go up. I guess I didn't put all the little things like Penny does, so. Let's go over chat.
Just print signature.
Yes, yeah, there's, yeah, there's several spots on there, but. I'll see.
Doing a great job operating.
Fix another issue as well.
What, who can your job while you're doing this job?
I'm doing it, yeah. I should get double pay. Get Andrew's pay.
Multitasking. Happy duty, I mean. Doing the. Good morning, Kay. Okay.
How are you?
Good thanks of you.
Oh, no one.
How are you, Kay?
Commissioner, and yourself?
Just Barry.
Barry, how are you this morning?
That commissioner thing at times, though, didn't buy a cup of coffee, I don't think. Yeah.
To put in public service, it's like, who are you talking to?
So is Lisa gonna join you yet?
No, she was unable to join us this morning. Emily's unable, so you just start with me.
Well, that's that's still an honor, so. And then I, how long do we think Jason's gonna be? So we go ahead and get started or? So anyway, we're we're live, we're not the Memorex uh, I don't know if you're aware of that. And so. So we have space for a little witness uh mental health recovery for Lincoln and Knox County, and you're going to. Uh share with us about run round one of the uh. Let's see, child, children, family supports application.
So um I did bring up your copies that people would want to take a look at this. If you like. So I understand that I'm the last person on the agenda and I have oh maybe about a half hour or so to talk. And so as I'm walking through this, please stop and ask any questions if you like. So you all charged me. To be the 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 support for you all to make some decisions about what to do with your local one Ohio dollars. And I also have the honor of being your representative to region eighteen um for the One Ohio Foundation. So I do represent you and your interests um at an organizational level. And if you ever have any questions or concerns or things you want me to take to that board. But you know, I'd be happy to do that. So Lisa unfortunately was not able to join us this morning. And Lisa and I are your advisory group. Together, um both she and I have significant experience in funding. I know you do as well as a group um. And what we talked about and what you have in front of you today is an idea and set of recommendations for what to do. At least for the first year with one Ohio dollars. So um. The last time I was here, you all talked about concerns with children and families. And so Lisa and I heard you about how that might be a place you might want to start. And what our thinking was is at least for the first year, you offer what kind of the current was a mini grant program. And that mini grant program um would um have different rounds to the first one be for children and families. The second one might be. For law enforcement and first responders. The third one might be for criminal justice. I mean, certainly that's variable. Um but keeping within what the spirit of one Ohio dollars are, um they are not intended to offset the cost of an organization's. Operational costs or to pay for their administrative overhead. They are intended to um develop direct services. And supports for those individuals that are the most deeply impacted by the opioid crisis. And certainly with children and families, there is then a tremendous impact. And so. What we thought again is that's where we would start. And so for children and family supports, um we um thought about some ideas. And in the RFP or the grant application, Lisa and I would come up with a community process to make this available. To um qualified organizations in Knox County to be able to apply for these dollars. And what we're looking for are programs and services that provide all sorts of care for families and children impacted by. By opioids and some ideas for that. Um you turn the page and you go to the last page, page four. Um I gave some examples of what the One Ohio Foundations and Laurie in the county states wire for two thousand and twenty five has related. A lot of the programs and services are related to children that are at risk of um children's services taking custody of them. Because of their parents' addiction or baby in custody. And then how to help parents gain access to care. Necessary for you to reunification of children. Um others have to do with navigation. Of communities by families that are searching for services for loved ones that are addicted by addiction and how to find um. Resources and then how to get that ongoing advocacy more than giving someone a telephone number and going, say, here, go call this person. Um it's more like, well, here, I will help you with this process and let me walk hand in hand with you until you get your loved one where they need to be. Um. Something in this county, because I sit on your fate uh fatality committee um for overdose, unintentional overdoses. And suicide overdoses is a need for family support following an unintentional overdose death. Um with grief and breathing counseling, which is very different than counseling. And you already have a wonderful chaplaincy group in this county that provides services. You have a lost family that provides services. Perhaps they might be looking for more financial support to be able to offer greater services. I know in focus groups that we've conducted in the past, several things where parents have said, you know, caring for funeral costs for someone. Who has died that I, you know, we just have the ability to be able to pay for them. That's something to people. Um certainly being able to provide support groups. That it's just that type of type of fear that people experience following a loss that like this is so tragic. Um the other thing I think about um the community, again, we talked about community navigation, the community mentoring this program. Where if I'm a family member, and I've been down this road before, I lived through what it means to have a loved one that's struggling with addiction. I can help you, interview you through the process, through my experiences um about how to address this um. And then um so there are just numbers of different services and programs. I I will tell you, one of my very, very favorite is I have the um. The honor of reading applications for region eighteen for Leaking County. And I read about this little program called Project Noel. On Project Noel. Assist children who have lost loved ones in addiction or who have family members who struggle to have a normal childhood. But they do things like they remember their birthday and they remember the holidays. They help them with school clothes. Um they send them the summer. They provide, you know, you know, grief groups, just lots of different sorts of things. So it opens up a lot of real creative. Things for communities to look at. And I think that the wonderful thing about Knox County is you have so many innovative. Committed people here across the board, faith-based organizations, um in school systems, on in the criminal justice system and providers. Just all over the place and social services that it would be very interesting to see what types of applications that came in. That being said, I know you have limited dollars um and you can't fund everything that comes in. And that would be something that Lisa and I, maybe working with Jason. Would be the determinant way to decide what program potentially could be funded versus others. Um and then Lisa and I are thinking about. Um the, at least for mini grant, the the maximum amount to recommend to you might be no more than twenty five thousand. Again.
How much money is in there, right?
Yes, I have that. So as of, yeah, as of yesterday, there's three hundred and sixty one thousand six hundred and seventy seven dollars.
Okay.
Little bit of money to play with. And and my recommendation is don't spend it all at once. Because I think that there's some other things down the road that could be helpful for you to spend these dollars on, too. And and we can test the water with this. And again, one reason for testing the water with a mini grant is for you to determine, well, gee, we really like this. We might want to invest more money in this in the future. It just gives you an opportunity to kind of test the water to see what works. Um even though I've given you a laundry list of things that have worked in other communities. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to work here. Each community is very unique, very different, so. Is this helpful to you to have this types of process?
Yeah, sure.
Did you have any questions for me?
That's our project Noel. Is that a local nonprofit? Is that a state uh?
I, that's a good question. To best of my knowledge, it's local. Um it's local to Marion County. That's where it's 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 located in. I don't know whether it's a national project that I just, maybe they just adopted the name that I can't. I don't know whether it's a national project that I just maybe they just adopted the name that I can't answer, but as far as I know, it's for Marion County.
So it's helping children who've had loss and they don't have maybe a parent any longer. To make sure they get remembered in their birthday and greet a normal scene with them.
Yes.
Holidays and things that may be really the toughest time in families missing.
Absolutely, and very painful children.
Yeah.
So though for me, particularly for children and families, these are unintentional consequences of the opioid. Um. Epidemic and. We, you know, we have, we have money that helps with that person is addicted themselves to treatment. We could always use more money for that, I'm not gonna lie to you about that, there's never enough money to be able to meet that need. But sometimes little things that you do for other people mean a tremendous amount of. Nothing has to be very sophisticated or very fancy, it's just speaking about children and about families and what their needs.
Um especially on holidays and special times where the tendency to feel alienated, isolated, forgotten.
Yes.
Yeah, you you said mini grant and then we talked about three over three hundred thousand. Is this mini grant dipping into the three hundred thousand or is this something different?
No, this 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 is this is usually your funding. So.
And we've only brought in like. Case talking about that three hundred thousand, then it it seems like a big pot, but it's that's built over what, three years or so? So this year, we've we've only received eighty five hundred dollars so far, so there's not. Lots of money, so I think the case point, if you start pulling out of that too fast and you find something you really like, there might not be funds to. It's abundant.
So the other question I have, you mentioned twenty five thousand dollars. Is that to help fund or solo solely fund?
So that's an excellent question, Barry, so. One of the things in this application we asked the question of is this. We need you to give us a sustainability plan. How do you plan to fund this after the grant is finished? Um and that's a hard thing for entities to know sometimes to talk about, but I think it's important, so. Oftentimes, we ask the question, are there any other additional funds that actually is asked in the application? Are there any other sources of income or revenue that you're bringing in to help already this project who will also be talked to? I will tell you and I'm sure that you are aware right now with changes in the federal and state government and funding. All of us that are funders are getting hit up because people are losing money all over the place and so. We're finding that across the board, people are saying, please, we we we're losing funding, this is a critical service and we recognize that. But that doesn't mean that we have the additional dollars to meet that need, so I know right now at N H R, what we're doing is we're taking a very hard look. At what we're funding, we're looking at a scarcity of funding and then. How we need our core services, what our priorities are. And those conversations are hard to have with people, particularly when people look at you and they're so hopefully go, but I have such a great idea. This would so help the community, we would go, yes, we very much value what you do. And we're not saying it's a bad idea, we just don't have the resources right now on this.
So when we look at our county, we're looking at. Somebody who has some longevity and some sustainability in one of these programs to give fund the twenty five thousand grant to.
So. Again, Barry, that's a great point and not necessarily so.
Okay.
You could have a church come forward and say, we like to have ten thousand dollars to start a program. And maybe they don't have the full funding, but they wait and we just want some seed money. And they might look at their parishioners and other places to be able to continue that and make it a ministry of their church, right? There's some, so there's some very creative ideas and ways to do this and. Um. And I will tell you from my own firsthand experience, applying for federal grants where I'm asked for sustainability plans, they think, okay, I wouldn't be asking for this money if I didn't eat it. I but I didn't have another way of bringing it in. Yeah, what makes you think I have any money after this grass gone, um. I know it's really hard, but we need people to think about different sorts of resources about how to do this and be creative about this. That being said, you could decide after the first year that you like this program and you might wanna continue with. Like that would be your decision. It does say, I did put a provision in the application that this is only for one year, however, if another round is offered in another year. You know, applications would be considered.
Educate me, Jason, how many years will we?
So it's like the opioid settlement was that like an eighteen year?
Years.
We're gonna get a certain amount over eighteen years, so. But that was the original settlement and there's been the other. You know, we've we've had some other pharmaceutical companies that there's been settlements and. Money triples in like that eighty five hundred dollars was not from our settlement money this year. So I'd have to go back, I didn't pull what we brought in last year, but.
There was an announcement this morning too, I heard coming in talking about, oh. Or I can't remember the name of the person, uh, staff their family, staff their family, that that one was finally been resolved. If the danger is some of them going bankrupt. And and I think that there's some concern about that, um so.
So it's not gonna be a windfall in one year, it's gonna be a little bit over.
So you really never know what the amount is gonna be because the reason I'm asking that is if. You fund somebody and you like the program and you had X coming in every year and you wanted to keep funding them. With the trickle down you were getting, there's no really way to do that.
No, there's not, and I think part of the other side of all of this that I know that we had to face this year. Is um we had a federal hearsay grant that ended here. Um and we have no way of making up with levy dollars or any other funding right now to replace those programs. And under law, I have to give um entities that we fund a hundred and twenty days notice, I've already notified them to say what you've done has been amazing. This money's ending, we cannot fund you any further, um you know, we will see what we can do, but I can make absolutely no promises that we're gonna be able to find other funding to assist you. That's the downside of this.
So you're very popular.
Oh, I am. Person, you know, no, no, but but I think um but I think that's part of this and I think. I think also over time, what's a great idea today, tomorrow may not be such a great idea.
Yeah.
So I think so there's some wisdom sometimes in limiting things and saying, okay, this worked really well right now, but you know, tomorrow, maybe we should think about doing something a little bit different. And so this has had its day or it's had its moment, but there's nothing wrong with saying that too.
And I think that's why we don't. The case point is not to allocate alcohol three.
Yeah, 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 well, I think. You better really like somebody for three over three hundred thousand.
No, no, you need to have a reserve, we have. We try to have some type of reserve. Um if we can to be able to take care of emergencies or in case something happens to our funding. Um in your case, to have that reserve because you could, there could be something that happens in a county that's very appropriate to use these dollars for that you can pull against. So I I think this is a, for me, this is a good safe way to start. Me, part of my thinking about understanding the needs of this county, because we've just done some assessment about what could be helpful here. Is another place I know that is my own personal. Or my heart goes to are to first responders and law enforcement. That has it on the front line of dealing with this issue for a long time and the trauma and the impact it has on their lives. And so my second round would be to potentially consider the support of wellness activities, specialized. Care for um law enforcement and first responders whose insurance may not pay for it. Who need that extra additional, there are some local people here that already do that, again, it's a very specialized thing that we don't do in the behavioral health, the health of the whole system. Happens like at places, but certainly if you talk to the sheriff's office, if you talk to any one of the. Law enforcement agencies or to other first responders in the county, they'll tell you it's tremendously needed. So that's another appropriate use of these dollars.
Is this a split, did the city get funding too or just the county?
The city does as well, um I'm not part of the process of.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure so.
So people who wanna apply for this, how do they, how do we market that to them to let them know? This is available for them to have access to.
So I think that's a discussion, um Lisa, Jason and I should have to advise you about how to do that. One thing I talked with Emily McConville about this morning that I ran into when reading the um foundations. Applications were that a lot of organizations that apply have never applied for funding like this. And they don't know what they're doing and they may have a really great idea, but they don't express it on paper. I am willing to consider doing some sort of workshop to teach people how to do this, if that would be helpful. Um and something that we would think about in terms of timing. I mean, there would be no guarantees that you're going to receive any sort of funding at all, but I wanna make sure. My experience with with um stuff like this is you'll get all the big hitters coming out that do this all the time and looking for money and know how to write these. And I don't want that smaller important group in this county to get lucky. I wanna give, if you qualify, if you're a charitable organization, if you're governmental, if you're a non-for-profit, I wanna give. Individuals like groups and opportunities that you have within the equal right. So that's part, again, I wanna make sure that the money goes to where the money needs to be or that I can advise you as to.
Unless I overlooked it, is there a? A date that the application must be turned in by?
No, we did not do that, we just, we just wanted to bring this to you as an idea that we had. As a way to frame it and to give you some control and to try to. Recognize there was some need in the county that you had identified and things that were important to you. That you wanted to address and just an idea about how we go about making this decision.
And I assume we would just leave this application process open because as. We really wouldn't wanna close it out as as organizations found something that maybe their thought could be used, they could apply at any time.
That's, that's one way of doing, I think my thinking was to open it up and then to close it after a period of time and go to round number two.
Okay.
Um again, in round one, you may get. Five applications and you go, oh, we wanna do all five and you may just say, okay, we're gonna close this down for the year, we don't wanna spend any any more money. Or, yeah, we wanna take a look at maybe one more area. Again, this is up to you in your real comfort, I have no idea what you're going to get, what types of programs you're going to get, waiting to see.
So next step would be for you to meet with Jason and the predators. Community and I think the workshop is a great idea.
Yeah.
To give people that understanding that it's so many good works out there, but they don't know how to go for the grants or what to do.
They just don't know how to write it and 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 I don't. And so having been a grants writer for a very long time in my role as executive director of the board, I will tell you. That it does make a huge difference if you know how to do this, because you know the right things to say, whether you've got the right permit to be funded or not, I think that's.
Just the grant application, is that a local grant application and and we make that less complex? Or is there requirements of the state that it has to be certain?
No, there, this is, this is a Facebook application. That we use it, because I think it gives you enough information, both legally as well as as well as financially, and one thing we do need to talk about are forms. If you don't have a county budget form, I'm sure we've got something that the board we can use that we can. Make it easy peasy and people to fill out a budget and teach the difference between direct services and direct services and administrative overhead.
Yeah, I would say your form, I emailed you back this morning, I got it, but I mean, our budgeting modules basically all automated, so.
Yeah.
I would say whatever you have in a.
But we. But we can make this easier for people to understand.
And and this would be a PDF fileable form.
Yeah, we do something easy. Um and actually, right now, this is on Word and. Questions are very simple and in part of the directions we're gonna do is I just. We don't have to have long floral narratives and people can give me boom, 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 and even in bullets. We can understand.
How do we use our grant expertise as just a boom, boom, boom? You gotta put those words in there and.
You know, but I again learned that people sometimes put lots of floral language into things and it means absolutely nothing, yeah.
Yeah, actually.
Simple gets right down to what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I I wanna make this, so this is just not only for you and our decision making about what we wanna fund, we wanna show the public what you're doing with these dollars. And the public just, yeah, just does not get. You know, I like to think the public does and people look at you like, I hope they say, what are you talking about? So we wanna make sure that people understand what this is about.
And I think that. Were you commissioners to review the applications, I think that just have it, what do you, what do you want the money for? Well, you know.
There, I was gonna say simplify.
Yeah.
Make it simple, but you know, factual.
Yes, this, this is, this is very, very simple. Um so basically, when I ask for funding from my providers, I use what is referred to as a logic. All I wanna know is, okay, what's the problem? What's the problem you've identified? So tell me, how do you know it's the problem? Okay, don't say that, oh, I observe and I wanna know concretely what your data. Um how did you figure this out? Where does this data come from? Um, okay, so now when you have a problem, so how do you wanna solve your problem? Okay, what evidence-based practice or practice that you know works the best with a group of people that have this problem? What is that? Um, how much is it gonna cost to solve this problem, do you think? And more importantly, so how do you know this problem? How do you know that what we're funding has worked? I wanna know on what your outcome is, how do you know for people that you have identified, you're target population, that this has worked? And sometimes we know with some funding of things such as prevention, over time, we don't see immediate results, we just don't. We may see results down the road a little bit. And what I tell people is sometimes you can plant seeds. And you have to wait for those seeds to um develop. And they may never remember what you said directly to them, but someday down the road, someone might say, you know, that woman. With the glasses on once said something, I don't remember her name. But yeah, it starts making some sense to me, but that's the preventions of that, actually, it's a lot of the stuff that all of us, so. Um there, there are ways that we can help find more immediate um results and other ways that we just are going to have to accept that it's part of a process that we know.
I mean, look, that's, yeah, I can say that's a problem though for a person putting in an application, because. How are you going to determine that it was successful or not and you're going, well, I planted a seed. Uh, so that's.
I can help them with.
Okay.
Because we do outcomes management all the time. And so we can help them craft an outcome that makes sense to you, that you can report to the public and say, this is how we've used our one Ohio dollars. This is how we are beginning to slowly to address the impact of opioids in the community, so. At the board level, our two main goals at the board level are to assist both the communities we work with, with decreasing. The unintentional overdose rate due to addiction. And then to decrease the suicide rate. In both counties, we know that we can't do this alone, this board. It takes everybody in the community and we know that to move that needle over time is a very, very still process. And we just reported to the state of Ohio results doing that in two thousand and one to two thousand and twenty four. And we have moved that needle slowly downward, which we're happy about, but it takes a really long time. So the fact that we're making some progress is important, it can help.
I'm sitting here thinking in my head, Kay, if you were affected or involved with the opioid epidemic, that's a pretty large umbrella that falls, that people fall under there as well.
It's huge.
Yeah.
It's absolutely huge and it's all different pieces parts have been into.
Yeah.
Uh, just all different sorts of pieces.
And I think. I think we're all ready to start using this month, but certainly not doing anything sitting in a fund in our treasury, so. It's for that particular purpose and I I think it's probably time to.
I agree.
Get the grant process going and start getting the money out to.
Application.
To do something.
And and to test the water, you may just say, oh, this, yeah, we don't want any part of this, we wanna find a different way to do this and that's fine, but this gives you an opportunity, it's better to try something. To see how it works and then we can. So my thought was would be to do something this. Yeah, and maybe we can even do something in July, so I realize it's not the middle of June. Um and July is gonna come much faster than I think it's gonna come.
Yeah, so I have like an application time from July first to the. Three, whatever.
Yeah, so.
So that way, those who procrastinate will know with the timeframe.
Yeah.
How how do you uh advertise that? This is out there and we're taking applications.
I'll figure out how to do it, I I think that. Um I I think there are people that are waiting for you all to do something.
Uh, there's a, there's some people in the crowd.
Our people, I think the harder thing is, I think you'll you'll get some applications and then making decisions about who you choose and yeah. That's, and then we'll just do the best job we do. Which comes back down to money, it does.
How did you figure on the twenty five thousand pick?
I looked at an average amount of um smaller funded programs that we had recently, some of those, I tried to. Think about some other mini grants we've done in the past. You could even decrease that amount if you wanted to, make them even smaller rewards if you wanted to do that, um. That was a thought that we had and then we indicated that for operational costs. Um that that we would only allow for ten percent, which means that that would be twenty five hundred. That might help, so say you have somebody that needs to be supervised by someone else, would help pay for that person's time to supervise. It might take um help pay for supplies and new things. It might take um help pay for supplies and new things that part of me. Um, many of these, I'm going to suspect would be asking for supplies. Someone may be asking for physicians. Or, you know, trying to. Um, so twenty, if if it was just a thought, again, it may not be a good thought. We're open. It's up to.
It could be less or more.
Less or more of this. So you're saying, hey, that ten percent is for administrative, but the ninety percent will go into actually doing something for the person.
Right. And so when we say, so what I did make clear is it was not administrative overhead. There's a difference between support directly to that direct service than it is paying the executive director of an organization or paying for the lights or whatever. We're talking about paying for, what do you need to be able to provide this service? And there's some immediate needs, particularly if this person not involved, so.
Good job, Kay. Thank you.
So much for what you're doing.
Well, you're more than welcome. This was actually fun. So I think we can have some fun with this and and we, it means a massage this as to what makes sense. Again, this is important that you all feel okay about this, that you feel this is something that you want to share with the community. This is a great gift.
The next step, you put together and gather out, and we'll get it out to the community.
And I know it's paid for the twenty five thousand. I just know that the foundation has a five thousand grant and a fifty thousand and and then Food for the Hungry has a ten and a two.
So that for the foundation, all that stuff is just random. You know, um, oh, well, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Knox County Foundations. I I think so that's different for us too. I I think that um it depends upon how much money they have and what types of applications come in. I can't speak for Lisa. But but I think that they try very hard to try to do as much as possible, I can't go, but they think it's reasonable.
I think if you make them too small, you spread the money out more, but maybe it really doesn't have much of an impact.
I was gonna say, I think, I think you look at the whoever's applying. Look at the monetary impact it makes on them before you decide the dollar amount maybe.
Now I'll be in the report. So before I go, I also want a completely different topic, wanting to thank you for your support for our levy coming up in November and for your vote of confidence. That means a lot to us and so thank you. You're welcome. And if you ever have any questions, please call me. I can come back. I can talk, you know, you know, I can talk to you, you're on. But or your need from you, just let me know and I'm happy to help.
Good to see you again.
You're more than welcome. So I'll get out of your hair so you can enter.
Yes. We've got a lot then, so.
Thank you very much for your time. Jason, I'll be inside.
Okay, sounds good.
Stay dry.
Thank you. I'm glad we tried. So that's my brass.
So commissioners, the only other things I have for you is just maybe a, just a couple of notes. Thursday is seventeenth and the county operations are closed under the state, obviously, state as well. So we will not have session. Uh, Tuesday, we had a couple of things that were scheduled that fell through on our agenda next Tuesday, next Tuesday, which is the twenty fourth. So you will be just doing bills only that there, there won't be a session, no one will be in or anything, but two of you will need to be here to sign bills. But short of that, um, there won't be a meeting. So when we meet again in full session, we'll be next Thursday, the twenty sixth.
We have to go into session to sign bills.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can swing in or we trend unless you want to.
I think during the, we were going to be off that day, right? Anyway, so yeah, just longs to, if you bump in and sign, that's all been before, what, ten, before ten penny? Typically before ten to get the bill signed, yeah. So that's all I have for you, Commissioner.
Uh, any other things that you want to share? Okay, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Will you stand adjourn? It was fair, I say hi, yeah.